We'll call the Williams County Board of County Commissioners meeting for January twenty first, two thousand and twenty five to order. Beth, roll call, please.
Barry?
Here.
Steve? Absent.
Do we know if Steve's on or not?
I'm here.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we got you.
Beau?
Here.
Chris?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum, we'll proceed. Please stand up for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, item C on the agenda is the consent agenda. Everybody should have a chance to look at that. If there's, if there's questions, now's the time. If not, what are the wishes?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Roll call, Beth.
Barry?
Yes.
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 Motion carried. Item D is public comment. Looking around the room, I don't see public. So if, if there, if anybody has something that's not currently on the agenda, and your name's not Karen, you can come up to the mic. Seeing nothing, we'll go to item E. There's a bid sale out of Tioga. Who's got that one? Yep. Supposed to be special guest Karen Prount, is that what it is again?
Okay, we had that parcel from the city of Tioga that did not sell at the annual tax sale, and it was Lot nine, Block two, Hillcrest. And we had two bids on it. Jonathan Guerina, he bid ten thousand six hundred dollars, and Rodney Peak bid ten thousand. So of course, the highest bidder is ten thousand six hundred. So I am looking-
Beth, can you get closer to your mic? They can't hear you.
So I am looking for approval to accept the bid from Jonathan Guerina and authorize the chairman to sign the date.
Could you read, could you read both of those with their bid amounts again, so to make sure they heard it on the mic?
Jonathan Guerina, whatever, ten thousand six hundred dollars, and Rodney Peak was ten thousand.
Move to approve.
Can we have a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, any?
The sale.
She recommended the sale to Jonathan Guerina, but maybe the mic wasn't close enough.
And have the chairman sign.
Okay, so it's, and you're, are you good with that, Chris? Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion? Roll call.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory? Beau?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Motion carried. Lindsay? Didn't mean to interrupt you.
Boy, this is a fun day. Good morning. So in your packet is a list of legislative priorities that have been drafted up from speaking with various departments, staff, et cetera. This is the first time that we've done this for legislative session, but trying to move towards helping to characterize the things that Williams County is paying attention to, especially in light of public attention on quite a few different issues, especially things like property tax reform. But also then to put us in a better position in the event that staff, or myself, or Helen, or a commissioner, would like to submit testimony on something, and it doesn't sync up with the commission's cycle. And so typically in the past, sometimes, you know, letters have been sent and then ratified, but then this would help have, help provide some guidance in terms of the types of subjects that testimony may be submitted for and what that would characterize. It's definitely not a comprehensive list. I mean, we could put everything in there, but if everything's on a list, then nothing is a priority. And so happy to add or change if you see fit, but otherwise, these were some of the core things moving into this session that we have. Then the intention would be, we would use this again as that guiding document in the event testimony is submitted, and then also to provide to our local legislators for just insight on how, what Williams County is thinking at this point.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question, if I could.
Yeah, go ahead.
Lindsay, is there, would there be a way to have House bills and Senate bills associated with each one of the highlighted areas of concern on the document?
Yes.
We say a House bill like one zero one one blah 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 is for this topic and et cetera.
Correct. Yep, sure can. Yesterday was the deadline for the House to submit bills, and the Senate still has a couple of more days. And we're also in a, kind of interesting, there's quite a few that are also being withdrawn before their head hearings have even been scheduled. So once we kind of get through this initial little forming and storming and norming of bills, I'll certainly utilize this in my bill tracking to be able to cross-reference the bills to the priority areas.
When can, as far as a timeframe, when do you think we could expect like updates on this? Is this going to be a weekly thing, or is it going to be?
Ideally, weekly. Ideally, weekly, as we have our, there's, all the legislative information kind of gets summed up on, on Fridays through various things, and so whether on Friday or over the weekend to be able to do that. Yes.
So looking for it, maybe Monday afternoon, just to, okay.
Yep.
Okay. No, I think that's huge. That's very helpful. I really like that idea. So anybody else got any questions or comments?
I just appreciate the time and the effort.
Yes.
Putting all this together, thank you, Lindsay.
Absolutely, thanks. Appreciate it. You got something else? I saw her walk in. I knew you were stalling. Good job. You are, good work. That brings us up to number two, dispatch. Michelle. Good morning.
You didn't bring the milk crate. Maybe I don't need the milk crate. So I'm Michelle Rome.
Slide that mic as close as you can, because they have a hard time hearing. Commissioner Kemp is on the-
Oh, okay. I'm Michelle Romans, I'm the Director of Dispatch. Y'all know already, so. So I'm just gonna kind of give an department update. So for two thousand and twenty four, our calls for service was a hundred and seventeen thousand calls. That, calls for service records, so anytime that there is a call in or an officer-initiated event, like a traffic stop or motor assist or something, our dispatch center creates a record for that incident. So we processed a hundred and seventeen of them. We received thirteen thousand plus nine one one calls, so that averages to about thirty six a day. And then also a hundred and fifteen text nine one one, so our dispatch center has that ability to do text nine one one as well as video to nine one one. And then we also processed fifty one thousand admin calls, which are non-emergent, so they're calling in like animals or those type things, parking complaints and so forth. And those are averaged a hundred and forty a day. And then as well, we made twenty four thousand outbound calls. So that's important, because that's time that a dispatcher is taking away from receiving a call or handling radio traffic. They're making outbound calls for officers and so forth, getting resources to our officers or a fire department and so forth. Overall, we processed eighty nine thousand phone calls for the year altogether, so that averages two hundred and forty four calls a day into the dispatch center. And on, on shift, we normally fully staff, we would have four, so four people during day shift and four people at night shift are covering that amount of calls. So the other thing was significant incident, we had the October wildfires. I thought it was important to talk about, because we received those nine one one calls. So over that weekend, we received a total of six hundred and thirty six phone calls over the forty eight hours. A hundred and eighty two were nine one one calls, and then four hundred and four, or four hundred and fifty four calls came in on our non-emergent lines. And usually that was the people asking, you know, where they should go or offering assistance, any, just a melee of calls. So we had standard staffing. At that time of the event, we had four on shift. Then at shift change, we held over our night shift, so we had two shifts to handle the call volumes coming in until incident command was set up and things kind of took fold and kind of got a handle on the incident, and then we were able to let our day shift go. But then also, we had an on-call schedule, so we were able to call in to dispatchers to help supplement through, through the night, to kind of give the ladies a break. Some of the challenges or takeaways that, that we learned was the on-call program was helpful, because we didn't have to go through a calling tree. We could just call that person and they immediately were able to respond. The other challenge was the assisting outside agencies. So as you guys know, we had thirty-plus agencies from around the area. A lot of those are outside of our county, so they're not on the siren radio, they're still on VHF. So we were not able to communicate with them effectively. So if there was something that happened, we wouldn't have been able to get them help. We didn't even know really they were out there. We had to work with state radio, and there was a lot of fielding of calls, and that kind of made things difficult, because we're trying to respond to our fire departments, we're still trying to maintain normal operations for the city, as well as handling the fires in the county. And so not being able to, or taking the time to talk with state radio and like being the middleman made things difficult. And so we're kind of working through resolutions for that in the future with state agencies and then with emergency management with Mike Smith. Another thing that we've, another takeaway was dispatch needs to have access to Everbridge to handle the alerts and nine one one. Reverse nine one one currently, we don't really have that option. We have to work through Mike, our emergency manager, to get those reverse nine one ones out. So that's something that we're working on as well. And then also, something that I want to start to develop is a tactical dispatch program, where you have like a special team of dispatchers, where they would come into like this, say this event or a large-scale event. Those dispatchers would be dedicated just to that event, and they would be called in so that our normal operations aren't affected. We can still provide the same service to the city, fire, all the other agencies while still working this major event. They can use, be used for like SWAT-type events and so forth like that. It's used in other places in the country. So, and then along with that, possibly getting a mobile dispatch console that can be used in the field, like in the command truck and so forth, so we can be out there and be more utilized as a communications aspect to assist with this incident command. So that's all about that. Any questions on that one?
Yeah, I do have a question. How do you, how do you go about a emergency, what'd you call it, emergency team? I mean, you only have so many dispatchers. Are they part of your dispatch or are they other people?
They would be part of our dispatch. I would, my hopes is to have a few, one from each shift, so then if there is a shift on, I don't have to pull that person. I can call in the other two, and then they would, there's some special training that you can use, more so learning like the, the language that officers use, their, how they run an incident command and so forth, and they would be strictly dedicated to working that incident to help relieve traffic. Staffing challenges, one of the big things when I took over dispatch was we had multiple vacancies, and to include an open supervisor position. Currently, we have fourteen fully trained dispatchers. We have four administrative staff, myself included. We all are trained to work in dispatch, and which we have been doing if we need to cover shifts, so I think that's super beneficial. And then we also have four trainees halfway through our sixteen-week training program, and if they make it, fingers crossed, we will be fully staffed for the first time in a very long time, according to the ladies. And a lot of dispatch centers across the country, that's, that's not a reality for them, and we're really closing in on it. So it's an amazing thing, and you know, I owe it to the ladies that I work with and our staff. They make it a really good place to work, and they have made training easy for the new people coming in. And so with the training program, we reallocated a position to be dedicated as a training coordinator, and I think that has helped our staffing situation. She oversees the initial training program, which we revamped, kind of made it easier on our trainers. We moved to a online D O R platform, so it's a daily observation report where we notate anything going on. We notate the good, the bad, and then everybody's able to view it, and we can work to either help them improve or coach them out kind of situation. That has been super useful, because before they used Excel sheets. We updated training material and so forth. And then we also moved to a different training platform, the training, Total Response, which we're, will, will be implementing their guide cards hopefully in the future here. But they also provide training, and it's, it's, it's way better than what we were utilizing before, so, and the ladies seem to really, really like it. Then we also did C T O pay for the, pay for their time and effort for training our new staff, and that's really helped people be motivated to train and volunteer and stuff like that.
Can I pause you there for a moment, Michelle?
What was that?
I just want to ask, for those dispatch staffing, you know, is any kind of emotional support necessary? Do they have emotional support? Is there somebody they can talk to? Because being on the front lines, just dealing with all these things, anything like that at all?
Yeah, so we sent a couple of our supervisors to this mental health crisis training and then also peer support training. So we have some in-house. We also can do like peer-to-peer support within our team. And then if there are major events, incidents and so forth, the sheriff's office and the police department and the fire department have been really good on making sure that they're including our staff into those critical, critical incident de briefs, so that's been super beneficial. Some of our ladies have attended, and like the officer-involved shooting type ones have really helped them. It kind of helps when they are able to see that their officer is okay. And then, that's, oh, we, we also, we're included in the first responder thing in the county, so we do have an option for counseling and so forth through Connectus, so. Some of the current projects that we're working on, implementation of Total Response, which you guys, thank you, approved and got rolling. We're partially through the process, it's kind of had a few hiccups with servers and so forth, but we're really working towards it, and hopefully we'll have it online by March-ish, and then we should be switching away from what we're currently using. Implementing, implementation of nine eight eight, so that's the suicide hotline. There's only a few dispatch centers in state that currently transfer calls from, so if we receive a call of someone that is having suicidal ideations or so forth and is needing someone to talk, instead of sending an officer and taking up a resource, we can transfer, if it meets a certain criteria, we can transfer that phone call to nine eight eight, and they'll be able to help that person and provide them resources or outside resources down the road. It's super great and it's an awesome thing, and it'll hopefully alleviate some of the calls on our officers that don't, they don't necessarily need to respond to. Text to nine one one and live video chat features. We already have, we've had text to nine one one, but now we're starting to implement live video chat features, so in a situation, we can request access to their video, and they can livestream into our dispatch, so then we are able to see what is going on and then relay that information to our first responders before they get there. Because as we know, sometimes callers have a difficult time describing something when they're in a difficult situation, and so we're able to view it and describe it to our officers, to make sure that we're keeping our officers and fire departments safe. The next thing is the I am responding application countywide. Implementing this would be better communication, sharing of information and location capabilities. We're not, we're all still on a trial right now, but I've received really positive feedback from all the local rural fire departments, so hopefully we'll get moving on that as well. And then CAD integrations, computed, computer-aided dispatch programs. Our CAD implements with several of our programs, so it's constantly updating, and anytime we get a new program, we have to make sure that we have an integration, so the information across shares, our information across goes smoothly to all, all of our programs. And then radio management training. Myself and Liberty, we went to Bismarck and also did some online training, so now we'll be able to update and program all our first responder agency radios in-house, if need be. It's kind of up to the agencies currently how they want to utilize us, but we now have that ability to, if they need something updated or if there's an issue with a portable, we would be able to troubleshoot it and kind of, instead of them having to wait for a vendor to come out to them, they can just stop by the dispatch center and we'll be able to handle it for them and save them money. We've been working on updating all the W C D C policies to make sure that they're in line with the county policies. That's been a big undertaking. And then also we moved our Q A and Q I program in-house, and so with that, that came a lot of, like revamping the program and developing scorecards. So we review, we review dispatcher's calls to make sure that we're providing quality service to our citizens. And then also just working on collaboration with Williston Basin School District, as far as just making sure that we have a good line of communication, and in emergency, we'll be able to offer them the best service possible to make sure that our children are safe. Looking to the future, we are working on the cloud-based server. We don't have an exact start date yet, but hopefully towards springtime, we'll begin this process. Again, the tactical dispatcher program, we're also looking at collaborating with the Williston State College and their security issue, items or whatever, to make sure that we're also providing them quality service as well. And then, you know, the normal continued updates to software and hardware. Our dispatch center can't run unless we have the most updated equipment and so forth, and if one thing goes down, it can affect our entire operation, and so we need to continue to make sure that we're staying on top of that. And then just continue working with our user agencies to make sure that we're providing the best service to them and to our community. Any questions? Sorry.
See, we got any questions from Michelle? I, I appreciate the time you put into getting this together. It's nice to kind of see an update of everything that's going on, so great job, keep it up. Just about the fires, you guys knocked it out of the park, I thought, so go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, it's such a thorough report, and I love that you're thinking a little bit outside the box, thinking in advance of things that need to be done to improve your department. Thank you for your good leadership, that, that's, that's amazing. Some of the statistics, I thought, on the front were just astounding. Is there any way to communicate this with our public to let them know? I mean, there's just a lot that happens that nobody knows.
Yeah, I can work with Lindsay on that, too, so.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Uh, that comes to County Highway, Dennis.
Okay, it's that time of year again. If we would like to offer the seven thousand, or seven thousand, one thousand seven-ton permit again this year, as we have in the past, to go from the six-ton routes, gravel roads only, go to seven-ton, and they buy that one-time permit for a thousand dollars.
And Chris, do you, do you know what we do with the money, that type of stuff? You want to just let them know what we?
Well, all, all of the county roads, when we put frost laws on, we put six-ton on all the gravel. And then if you're an operator, you can buy a permit for, to go to seven thousand pounds per axle weight. A one-time fee for a thousand dollars. Then you can use the gravel with that thousand-dollar permit. Then that goes into a bucket, and in the past, the commission has divided that up equally, equally through the townships. So it gets back to the townships.
Okay, so, go ahead, Barry.
Yeah, I guess I would make a motion that we continue the, the seven-ton permit.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Roll call.
Cory?
Yes.
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, the next on the agenda is the speed zone at Basin Electric Power. We had shut it down to thirty-five mile per hour. I visited with them, and I'm assuming Beau probably did. They would like to leave it on until, they're hoping the first part of March, but he said, let's say the middle of March, to leave them speed limit on, to finish their, whatever spot they're in.
When, when we put it on, did we say that we were going to end it in January, or, I mean, why, why are we?
Well, some of the townships, we've been meeting with the townships, some of them have asked, and then Commissioner Anderson has asked, I'm sure other of the public have asked of when they're going to come down, and when will they be done? When are they going to be up and running and?
Lot of local residents been wondering when and why that speed zone is still there. So, I mean, that, I think it was good for discussion, but at least we have an end date from them, March, middle of March.
Is that something that we're going to want to just revisit it as we get closer to make sure, or do we want to make, do something now?
I think if we, can you plan on just putting it on the second meeting in March? I guess if the power plant thinks they need longer, but, I mean, my personal experience in that area, the sightline of that speed zone, I mean, you've got plenty of time to see what's going on there, so. I mean, I, I think it's time to take it down, but if they want till March, I'll respect that.
Okay, everybody good with that? We'll just put it on the second meeting in March. All right, we can go on to the loader advertising.
Uh, I would like permission to advertise for a used wheel loader. See what, see what we can come up with. As you know, the prices of new have went quite high, so. And for what we needed, it's for our yard. The one we have there has between twelve and thirteen thousand hours on it. And of course, we use it in the salt sand, so that kind of gets things. At least advertise, see what we, see what we can come up with.
Yes, we're going to need a motion for it, yep.
We'll make a motion to approve the advertisement to purchase a used loader for County Highway.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Beau?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes. Motion carried. You got anything else, Dennis?
Okay, and then we're moving forward with our projects for the summer. The gratings and pavings and the bridge removals and boxes, and we may need some help getting some easements. There's some crucial spots. Hopefully, we can have them ready to go here shortly. To, it's minimal, but we may need some assistance helping us track people down. That can be a challenge at sometimes. If they don't live here, then it's a, can- a challenge sometimes. If they don't live here, then it's a, can be a challenge.
Well, I think everybody's willing to be available, so if you need help, go ahead and call, and we'll do what we can.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Dennis.
Looks like we're down to item G. Helen.
Good morning. You'll see on that position report, we have a corrections officer position listed to be filled. We've actually had it over in the hold column for a while, but they're ready to do some additional training, and so we're ready to fill the position.
Okay, can we get a motion? So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes. Motion carried.
All right, and then you'll see before you an agreement that would look somewhat familiar, because it's similar to the agreement that we have with the Vector Department and the Weed Department. In the world of accounting, these three agencies, Weed, Vector, and Water, and the Water Board, all have a board that has people appointed by you, have budgets that have some approval process through the Board of County Commissioners, and we have treated Weed and Vector more like a county department over the years, and the Water Board has remained quite autonomous. But through a required change in our auditing practices, so coming through our auditor, which is Ida Bailey, and just some updated accounting rules, we are required to handle the Water Board's finances, let's call them on our same software platform, integrated a little more than they have been with our general ledger and, and other end-of-year financial statements. And so to do that was actually quite a change for the Water Board and for their, their treasurer secretary. And just like with Weed and Vector, we negotiate through the details. It ends up to be an agreement like you have in front of you. And so we've spent the fall talking through the details with them. That, that agreement actually was written sort of custom, and then in the end, Karen determined that it would be most effective to have it really as consistent as we could with Weed and Vector. And so that's what you see before you. So there is not a substantive change in how they operate. The board still makes the decisions. They still have the same work before them, but their, their bills and some of those financial items will be processed through the county's finance department instead of being handled separately by the secretary treasurer of the Water Board.
It's been vetted by Karen, I take it, in your conversation?
Karen wrote the agreement. Yep.
And I'm assuming you're looking for a, a motion and an authorization for the chairman to sign?
Correct. We do need the chairman to sign.
Anybody have any questions about the agreement, or?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve the JPA and give the authority for signing.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes. Motion carried.
Any other questions for me?
Anybody got anything else for Helen? Nope, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That brings us to item H, adjournment, 834.
Are we reconvening his part board right away?
Do you want to sign now?